Welcome everybody, it's two minutes past one. As you'll see around the table, we've just got a quorum. So we won't be able to continue the meeting if anybody leaves. Gua Tato, I want to welcome all to the August 15th Infrastructure Services and Network Committee. There is no public forum today, so I'll go straight on to item two, which is apologies. I'd like to move that the committee accepts apologies from Mayor David Cole, councillors Murray Lefiso, Mike Lord, Kate Wilson and Conrad Stedman for absence. Councillor Hawkins, second. Oh, actually, well, your councillor Wilson is absent for... Oh, no, she's going to attend now. You don't count as a quorum anyway, so I guess we'll accept. Very good. So I guess clarification is councillor Wilson's still an apology. I'll move that, move those people off. Second there is councillor Hawkins, are all those in favour? Against, carried. Third is confirmation of agenda. I have moved that the committee confirms the agenda with the following alterations: That in regard to standing order 2.1, option C, be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments, seconded by councillor Elder. Those in favour? Those against? Carried. Declarations of interest. Members are reminded of the need to stand aside from decision making when a conflict arises between them, between the enrolments and elected representatives of any private or other external interests they might have. I move that the committee... Well, does anybody have any changes to the rest of interest? I move that the committee notes the elected members' interest register attached as attachment A and confirms proposed management plan for elected members' interests, seconded. Councillor Benson-Pope, those in favour? Against? Carried. Part A reports. Mr Dyer? So we've got the DCC submission, proposed regulatory framework for dam safety. And councillor Wilson is on the phone because she is going to want to comment during the questions and comments section. Happy to go straight to questions. Anybody have any questions? Councillor Gary?
Mr Dyer, I wonder if you could explain what the implications are of, in terms of comparison, the dam in Britain, the Wally Bridge Dam, with 6,000 people plus evacuated. I understand there was flooding before that happened and it's a clay core. How does that compare with our dams and and the risk and so forth? Obviously it was a very extreme event, but it's interesting we should be looking at this at a time when it's a kind of fairly unprecedented occurrence.
Yep, so this, our dam portfolio, of which we have several, there's a couple that are puddle core clay dams, which are similar, similar structures. Not of the same size in terms of volume retained, but really broadly the things that we do under the NZSO guidelines, which is roughly what the regulation is suggesting should be, should be carried out as a minimum, are steps that assess those structures in terms of their resilience to large storm events, in terms of their ongoing stability and all of that sort of thing. So it's a kind of, all of those steps count towards ensuring that those kind of events don't happen. We do that, we do that through commissioning a series of experts and regular inspections and upgrades and all sorts of different works over time. So a good example of upgrade works is the Ross Creek refurbishment, which is something that the city's invested significantly in over the last wee while. Another good example of a more minor upgrade is we're in the process of upgrading a spillway at Southern Reservoir at the moment, which is another earth dam. It's kind of our normal core business. That's not to say that a large, you know, very significant event wouldn't put the city in a similar position if it was of real significance, but we do everything that's, we do a lot of things under the guidelines that take steps towards making sure that doesn't happen.
So just another question for clarification. So would you be of the opinion that with climate change and the extreme events that we experience and we will continue to experience this work and the direction this is going in is even more important? Would that be a fair comment?
Yep, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to take our councillor Wilson now.
Thank you. I've hardly heard anything, so apologies if I'm doubling up on any questions. This isn't the best and effective way of communicating apologies. Two questions. One is understanding the difference for a water reservoir, which can be quite considerable, and its maintenance compared to a dam? Do reservoirs have to undertake the same standard?
Um, you know, I think I've got it. Oh, right.
I can't hear, I can't hear.
He's coming to your phone, or my phone actually.
Okay.
Hi.
So, under the, under the proposed regulations, there is no difference. So a dam is classified as a structure that retains water. So our water reservoirs, our significant water reservoirs that aren't concrete tank structures would all be classified as dams.
And the concrete tanks, wouldn't they?
No.
Okay. And the only other question I had is that there may be, and I'm looking at bigger than each picture rather than just than each method, so maybe that's the wrong thing, but with given climate change and the potential need to increase the number of dams needed, whether it be for firefighting or for flood mitigation or a number of other reasons, wondering that once someone puts on a dam, does the hazard area below it then put them on notice? Or is there a need that they then be put on notice that they may become a PIC high of this development below it? Because there seems to be no trigger from something going from low to medium to high that may make that marginal.
So Kate, I'll just repeat the question, just to make sure that I understand. So is what you're saying that there should be a need for some sort of review cycle that starts when something changes downstream of a dam in terms of that potential impact classification?
Yes, that if anything happens down and within that spill area of a low risk, that then makes it medium or high, that the dam should be put at notice to be at party in any development or, you know, if RMA consent, like a hazard for example. Because all that area should be considered a hazard and less likely to get development rights, potentially. Because, I mean, there has to be a balance there, but that can change the nature and the requirements for the dam owner quite substantially.
Yeah, I think that's, that's true and it's something we can factor into our submission. I don't believe the, as I understand it, the regulations don't don't have anything that suggests if something changes downstream that that should immediately cause a review of that potential impact classification, but I'm sure that's something that we could submit on.
But surely if you have to assess that your lower and then you've got 20 houses or 30 houses below you because someone put up a subdivision, then that would naturally put the standard of a dam up and make it... Yeah. And it's just understanding that there are some flow-on or unintended consequences that should be considered.
Yep. No, agreed.
Okay, thank you. That's the only method I want to make sure we cover. Thank you.
Councillor Wiley. I'll let Mr Dyer get back to his seat.
Do you want to stay, Kate?
Hello?
Do you want to hang up now or are you listening to the conversation?
I can hang up. And if they want to add it on, they can add it on. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Tom, the list on page 17 of our report lists the nine dams. Are they all classified as large dams?
Yes.
I presume so, yeah. Okay. And as I was reading this, what also struck me was the Edgcombe flood and the stock banks. Now, and the impact, because what happened there with the stock bank giving way was actually not really much different than a dam giving way. So was there, was there any thought or is government looking at anything? Again, that's, you probably don't know what government's thinking, but is there any thought within council that stock banks could be looking at some sort of similar classification?
So it's certainly not covered within this particular paper or set of regulations. The, really broadly, stock banks within the territorial authority area of Dunedin City Council are managed largely by the ORC. And the the resilience of those structures is, depends on levels of design and maintenance and all of that sort of thing. But no, there isn't necessarily any coordinated work that I'm aware of at the moment going on in that space.
Okay. I see Mr Palmer was on the advisory group, the government advisory group. Are you aware if the ORC are submitting on this as well?
No, I'm not.
Have they asked for any opinion from the DCC on this? Because I would have thought the ORC would have been, again, as you explained just before, this is a lot more ORC related.
So if the ORC are submitting, they'll likely be submitting on as a regulator. So they'll be an entity that regulates these kinds of structures within their territorial authority or area. But no, we're not aware of any submission from the ORC yet and haven't collaborated.
Okay. Are you aware of what the total number of dams would be within our city boundary? That would be the classification?
No, I'm not aware.
Thank you.
Councillor Benson-Pope?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. In relation to those questions, I'm just looking at paragraph 11 of the discussion paper, which talks about the regional authorities having that regulatory role. So I just want you to confirm my assumption that this issue is an issue for us inasmuch it relates to our water supply infrastructure at the moment and there's no regulatory responsibility beyond that.
No, that's, so that's correct. So we are submitting on this on the basis of being a dam owner rather than a dam regulator.
Thank you.
Councillor Elder?
As indicated, the compliance and audit costs could be a concern?
So at this stage, we comply with all of the paperwork elements of the NZSO guidelines. So we do all of the plans and reviews and all of that sort of thing, but we do have some outstanding actions in terms of actual physical work and that sort of thing. If this, if these, this proposal is passed into law, it's likely that those, the timeframes and commitments that we make through those plans would need to be resourced effectively and reasonably quickly, which would be a bit of a change. But it's far too early at this stage to talk about costs or what that might look like.
As, as we are submitting, do we kind of, can we, in a submission, put a concern around that, especially for smaller councils which have even less funding options from rates?
I can't recall if that formed part of our submission. But yeah, there's no harm in suggesting that there will be cost pressures created by this kind of legislation.
Thank you.
Councillor Hall?
Looking at that dam on TV in the last couple of nights overseas, the failure has been the spillway. And looking at it, it's been a washout under the concrete spillway. And I've seen down the leaf where the panels in the bottom of the leaf have all done the same, have been washed out underneath and collect. Have we got any way of identifying under the spillway? Are they solid fill? Are they, is it void, which will cause the collapse? We get any way of identifying those problems?
So our physical dam safety inspections do look, look to try and identify those issues where they're occurring. So some, we undertake really regular inspections through staff. But we also bring specialists and review those kind of failure mechanisms on a less frequent basis. But those kind of failures typically occur over a long period of time. And typically you see symptoms early and if you intervene early, we don't necessarily have those catastrophic failures. But yes, we regularly monitor those things to try and make sure that that doesn't occur.
How would you monitor that kind of stuff?
When our dam safety engineers come to, come to site, they look for things like deformation in the spillway and any changes in in the dam face itself. I, in terms of other techniques, I'm not 100% sure, but we do that with suitably qualified people looking for those kind of things.
Yeah, well, with an earth dam, you can see, but once it's covered with concrete, you can't. Could maybe X rate, see if there's void under it?
Yeah, there's a whole lot of potential techniques. I, we'll go away and have a look and consider what we've been doing and ask around what we might be able to do and I'll come back to you individually if you like.
Yeah, because there is gear symbol and the effects running back to tell if there's a void under it or not.
Yeah, I've just got one quick question, just a clarity one really. The regulatory framework is for all dam owners, whether they're municipal, private or large companies, correct? And we're submitting as a dam owner?
Yeah, correct.
That's good, very good. Councillor Benson-Pope has indicated he is willing to move this.
Do you move the recommendations on page 12?
Yep, do a seconda, councillor Hall. Anybody wish to speak to it? Then all those in favour? Against? Passed. You're staying, Mr Dyer, for the next item. So that's the Three Water Activity Report for the quarter ending the 30th of June 2019. Do you wish to speak to it?
Straight to questions.
Any questions? Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, Mr Dyer, and apologies, I can't find the exact paragraph here, but there's a comment in here made around some, an intractable issue with nitrates at Warrington. Is that something you can expand upon?
Yes. So we have a consent limit at at Warrington Waste Water Treatment Plant for nitrogen that we regularly do not meet and have not met for a long time, as long as we've had the consent, I believe. The Warrington, sorry, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Warrington is a few years away from an upgrade and a reconsenting process. And we've been planning on dealing with that issue at that time. The ORC has, so we've done a whole bunch of environmental effects monitoring and all of that sort of thing to determine the impact of that nitrogen breach, or breaching that limit. And to date, they're not showing anything significant and the ORC has been happy to, happy for us to address this when we get to our next consent cycle.
So effectively it's due to expire soon enough to not warrant trying to get a variation on the consent.
Yes, broadly.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary?
Mr Dyer, I have two questions. One is around paragraph 23, where you talk about the blockage as a reducing trend, which is great to see, but the current blockage trend is largely caused by fat and wet wipes. Do we do any education of the public on that and the community on that?
No, we don't.
We've all seen the Fatburger, Fatburg things.
So nationally, within New Zealand, there's some quite good utilily run campaigns at the moment that are starting to demonstrate benefit in terms of what goes down the loo and therefore what ends up causing issues in the network. And that's something we've been sort of broadly considering but haven't dived into. What we've, so as you can see, that trend's been reducing quite significantly, significantly over the last two years and some of that's down to maintenance and sediment cleaning and all of that sort of thing. And some of that's down to the renewables programme and ensuring that we have a, on the whole, we have a better quality of pipe in the ground. But as we, as we get down to, as we get down to a level of sort of 10 blockages a month, we're getting to a point where we're seeing different things showing up as the significant contributor. So what we'll be looking at over the next wee while is whether or not a campaign like that might be worthwhile.
Interesting, thank you. And my second question was about 31, Ross Creek refurbishment project. The timing of the art installation, any ideas about when that might be?
Still a little bit unclear. So we've been, we've commissioned an artist and we've commissioned a series of a series of conversations with that artist around how this might work and there's been components like structural design and and really strong engagement with with local Runanga to make sure that the art installation is fit for purpose from their point of view. So that's all ongoing. The next step is to lock down a date and say, all right, installation aware this time. But that hasn't quite happened yet.
Thank you.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Tom, paragraph 30, coastal erosion. I guess one of the topics that I'm hearing quite a bit about from residents on the in regards to the beaches is after Fox River and what's happened in Westport about the old tip site and the security of the bank and what's inside.
Yep. So staff have begun to kick off a reasonably significant piece of work with consultants to set up a project that will work to engage with a whole bunch of community members, looking at the ocean beach frontage generally. So everything from St Clair Seawall down to Lawry's Head. That, as I said, that work's starting. There's been some good early engagement meetings with different interested parties. There's been, the kind of, the early setup work is starting to happen now. What we'd expect to see is by sort of, by the end of the, end of next calendar year, we should be in a position to put some options forward to council to manage the landfill that sits within or beneath Kettle Park and all of the other coastal assets and frontage that's there. That kind of emphasis being on ensuring that those options have been strongly socialised and and worked through with the community before they land at this table.
So I'm thinking more around Moreau Street where that's all closed off and and where a few years ago we were losing the light standards into the, into the sea off the bank.
At Dane Rugby Club?
Yep. And I'm thinking more around that area.
So that's uncharted.
And you've got, I appreciate that because I was at the meeting last Monday where a few people were gathered. But the part that I'm just getting, getting a feeling of is I understand the longer term view, but do you have a plan, A, should we get a strong easterly swirl or south easterly swirl, similar to what they've had on the west coast?
So over the last, the last few years, we've largely focused on maintenance plans and learning from storm events in front of the geo-vig structure and St Clair Seawall. So both the Transport Group and Three Waters Group undertake quite regular maintenance there, making sure that those structures are, remain fit for purpose. And we haven't, for a period of time, we haven't seen a strong trend of degradation to the bank in front of Kettle Park and therefore haven't necessarily intervened. But if, if an event were to occur, we have a whole bunch of options for managing that.
So you have a plan?
A loose plan, yeah.
And just following up on paragraph 31 around Ross Creek, it said the third stage of recommissioning from 90 to 100% is planned from midwife. Does that all go smoothly and are we now at 100% there?
I'm not actually sure. I've been away from work for a little while. Yes, it's in process at the moment. We haven't quite had 100% yet.
Councillor Elder?
Just a quick question, just a follow-up. I was just wondering how the application for a stormwater consent into Kai Kristarim is going? The Daldershun project?
So that application hasn't occurred yet. We are not far away from a third meeting with local Runanga to talk about the impacts and options for undertaking that work. The principal being that we want to make sure we're well aligned with their thinking before applying for a consent. And largely, you know, if we are aligned, that consent should be reasonably straightforward. If we're not, it will not be. So it's sort of a bit of pre-work before that application.
Thanks. I just have a couple of quick questions. I noticed we've got an improvement in the lowering of the failure rate of water mains as well. So are we actually now starting to see the effects of upgrading our infrastructure systems and actually seeing it now in the form of a more reliable system?
Yeah, I'd like to think so. The most significant investment that we've we've put into play over the last decade has been certainly in that water main renewal space and we've gone from quite low rates of network firefighting compliance and quite high rates of bursts to and started to show quite positive trends in that sense. There are also other things that could potentially contribute to it, like we've had some quite mild winters over the last wee while and those really cold winters do put a decent jump in the burst rate. But no, to date, it looks that way.
And to follow up on councillor Wiley's concerns around Kettle Park, and I guess this might be from Mr Drew. Is Waste, Environment and Solutions also working on this together? In terms of what may be a remediation event in the future they have to deal with?
We've had some really broad discussions with the team in Waste and Environmental Solutions, but not in parks and transport as well, because all of those sort of utilily parts of the organisation are, could potentially be impacted. So for instance, if a broad option was to excavate and remove some of that landfill, then it would impact playing fields and all of that sort of thing. So we've been talking to everyone, but as those options get developed and we go through that process, broadly, there'll be far more involvement.
Yeah, and do we know the boundary from the edge of the old landfill to where the current exposed area is? Like, how many metres we have?
I couldn't answer that now, sorry. But we do have a series of reports that place those kind of things.
Okay, good, thanks. Councillor Hall has indicated he's willing to move this. Is there any more questions? Okay, do I have a seconda? Councillor Elder, all those in favour accepting the report? Against? Moved.
Thank you.
Item seven is Waste and Recycling Collections Community Engagement. I assume Mr Henderson? Oh, I didn't send you. Very good. Welcome, both of you. Councillor Hawkins, you? You've got a question, yep. Do you want to just, do you want to speak to this at all or just go straight into questions? Okay, we'll start with councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's a question around timing on two fronts. If this work is ultimately being consulted on during the long-term plan process in 2021, the implementation of any change of service levels wouldn't be anticipated until the end of that calendar year at the earliest. Would that be a correct assumption?
Yes, that'd be correct here.
And is there any way that that timeline can be accelerated?
There's been a lot of discussion around the impacts that the potential changes will actually have, especially in regards to the 10-year plan. So originally it was hoped that the timeline would be quite a bit shorter than that, but because, basically because of the significant change in levels of service and potential impacts round funding etc, the decision has been made that it really does need to be part of the 10-year plan process.
Okay, accepting that. Is there any... Accepting that, is there any reason why this engagement process that's being set up for us here can't be conducted as part of the consultation on the waste minimisation and management plan that's being scheduled for next year's annual plan? Would that delay that any further if that was to be done then rather than in November of this year?
So the potential impact there is we want to get the engagement, and the preferred option out of that engagement so we can actually continue completing the detailed business case. So any delay in that process will mean that we can't actually go into the financial modelling for what the actual, the detail of the curbside of waste collection model. We wouldn't be able to finalise that until we have an idea of what the preferred is and we can actually get into that detailed modelling for the design of the system.
So is that, that doesn't quite answer the question. My question was, would the ultimate decision around levels of service in the long-term plan debate not be able to occur? Because if nothing is physically changing until after that process, would that process during the long-term plan be delayed if we were to move this engagement through to next year as part of the waste minimisation plan review rather than over the summer?
I think, I think the biggest problem I can think of is that it would actually probably confuse the WMP process because that is going to be, the WMP will be adopted as part of the annual plan, but if we're doing engagement for the ten-year plan as part of the annual plan process, that just sounds really confusing to me.
One of the challenges is the funding. And so the preliminary engagement will give us a sense of what the community want. And then once we have that, we'll be able to build the different funding models and there are multiple options that would then have to be factored and we don't think we can have that work done for the annual plan next year.
That wasn't my question. My question was, if this work that's being scheduled for November happens during next year's annual plan process, would that delay the ultimate work coming to the long-term plan process? I'm just trying to-
Delay this?
Yes, delay this until it's part of, they make it part of the annual plan discussion. I'm just trying to get a sense of what the risk is.
Yeah, it could be done. I do just think the only potential problem is the fact that we're, this would be doing, as I was saying, this consultation that's actually going into the ten-year plan, you'd be doing that as part of the annual plan process. And I don't know whether that would actually just be confusing as treating this as an individual engagement so that we can then flow it through and not confusing it with the WMP process. Otherwise we're confusing the annual plan and the long-term plan process.
The waste minimisation plan isn't an annual plan issue either.
If I may, through the chair, can I just clarify what you're asking? Because I think, so are you suggesting that-
I'm trying not to make comments in the questions section, but my concern is around who isn't able to participate in a consultation process over the summer. And given the increasing tenure of interest from particularly the student body and their parental organisations around this, it would seem like a missed opportunity. So if it was part of the annual plan, that would be less of a risk. I'm just trying to get a sense of what the implications of that would be.
Again, if I might, through the chair. So you're suggesting potentially that the preliminary engagement where we go out with these options for consideration happens as part of the annual plan, so delay it slightly?
Not suggesting anything.
No, but that's your question, would do it there?
Would that push the end result out any further?
No.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Councillor Gary.
My question's around a couple of paragraphs, page, sorry, paragraph thirty-one and thirty-one and... I can't just find the other one at the moment, but you'll be aware of what I'm talking about. So it's around the doing away of the skip days. In thirty-one it talks about additional recycling drop-off facilities would be introduced in CBD and in rural locations, but the skip day service would be gone. So when you're talking about rural locations, are you talking about the places that have skip days at the moment or different locations to those?
Actually, there'd be a review done of all the locations. Those would be the ones that would be, the current skip day areas would be where we'd start with. However, there's a lot of areas, Altrum, East Tari, those sort of areas that don't get any service whatsoever. So actually a network of rural recycling drop-off points would need to be significantly better than the skip day service we provide to just certain locations at the moment.
So then that brings me on to the other question, which was actually thirty-eight, paragraph thirty-eight and under optional, sorry, forty, lost it again, forty, forty. The service would be available to all urban and rural township residents. How do you define township residents?
Basically, that's the same areas that are currently serviced with curbside. So it's the Waikeati and Middle Mac, those sort of areas, Moskell, et cetera. It's the same areas as currently.
So I'm trying to think how the likes of Pukahaki would fit into this, where they've had a drop-off area, they've got also a skip day in the vicinity. How would you research for the likes of Pukahaki, which I would consider a rural township? May not fit your definition, I'm not sure.
So Pukahaki, at the moment, they get that, the scheduled waste recycling drop-off day. So if there was actually an established rural recycling facility, and for argument's sake, talking about a containerized system. So what's had quite a bit of success in certain areas, especially in North Island, is basically hole-in-the-wall container systems. So they're always available for people to use for recycling drop-off.
So how would something like that differ from what was there before? Where there was a drop-off point and we had problems with dumping? I'm just trying to clarify in my head what you're describing there.
I think there's always going to be problems with dumping, that Pukahaki side especially has been quite chronic for it. Addressing illegal dumping, I would say is a separate issue to the recycling, is basically just making sure that recycling drop-off facilities that we provide, they won't be contamination-proof, but if they're sized and shaped, it makes it far more difficult for contamination to occur. And if those facilities are available all the time.
Do you have any concerns that taking away the rural skip days will increase illegal dumping? Or how is it proposed to manage that possibility?
There's always going to be a concern around that. I think the simple fact is that rural skip days basically go completely against our waste management minimisation plan. It's not encouraging any waste diversion at all. I think the important thing is to actually try and make sure that we've got those diversion opportunities and facilities available. I think there's a certain section of the community that will always show avoidance behaviour. Because getting rid of, you know, we also have the user pays principle in our WMP. So whoever produces waste has to pay for its disposal. So there's always going to be that potential for dumping. I think the important thing is to try and put as much as we can in place for waste diversion and try and reduce it as much as possible.
So I guess my final question is around how will we communicate this to communities who've been used to having a rural skip day, who have a real interest in recycling and have done a certain degree of that within what is offered? So for example, an organic skip and another skip and things are taken out as they arrive that could be recycled. How are you going to sell it to those folk, taking that totally away and replacing it with something that isn't as broad as that? And they are paying, remember, in that situation.
So I'm not too sure I understand this. So basically, the communities, as like Portobello is a good example, are the community that have built a diversion day around the skip day. If that's a hundred percent successful, they don't need the skip at the end of it because most waste should be diverted. I don't, I'm not too sure I listed the question.
Yeah, okay. So, no, I wasn't thinking of that, that event doesn't happen all the time. So on a rural skip day, as I understand it, you've got sometimes an organic, more recently organic skip for organics. So people rock up, they pay their money, they divert to the organic, they, some of it will go in landfill and other items are taken out as it arrives that are useful and may be able to be used by somebody else. So they're paying the money and they're doing a certain amount of sorting of their rubbish according to what's offered to them. I'm just wondering how we're going to communicate to the communities who have that now, where we're going to quite a different system that doesn't offer that broad spectrum of things?
There's a little bit of confusion there. So when we're talking about the rural skip days, predominantly that's just talking about the general waste skips that are provided in certain areas. Where we have put those diversion services around, we can maintain services around the diversion exactly along the lines of what you're talking about. That would be enhanced with the fact that we'd have the rural drop-off facilities. Instead of there only being one opportunity every six months for people to actually divert waste, there would be a facility that's there all the time.
Great, thank you. You explained it really well, thank you.
Councillor Hall.
Item seven on page ninety, where we talk about waste futures and, and circular economy. Now, if we look at the amount of topsoil that goes into the landfill, that goes over the face and gets buried, if we look at separating that out for reuse, the city and the parks for screening and all that kind of stuff. I had the privilege of working for Man City Council forty years ago, forty-five years ago on the landfill. And everything that come in was sorted, there was enough cover material, there was enough stuff coming in. They could use for that, they could use for that, they could use for that. Didn't see it pushed over the face and pushed over the massive cover. We used to sort everything that's covered by truckloads. Topsoil was tipped separately so it could use as cover material and the final stuff. In this situation, the amount of topsoil that the city uses for upgrading their parks, they'd be separated, stockpiled and screened out and reused through the city. There's just so many options in this circular economy. We are not taking advantage of it. We're only simply concentrating on general waste credit from the houses.
So just to, so there's a couple of bits in there. So the soil that we use for construction and use for cover material is separated and stockpiled at Green Island so that it can be used when it's needed. At the moment, part of our plan for the next twelve months is actually investigating the use of artificial cover material so that we're not using decent cover material as cover for the landfill. That material can then obviously go to clean fill and be, or be reused constructively. But at the moment, it is all stockpiled separately so to be actually used in construction of the Green Island landfill and in the cover material.
How much cover material do you put over the tip faces now?
At the moment, it's roughly a one-to-one ratio. So basically for every cubic metre of rubbish, there's a cubic metre of cover material, approximately.
Well, as I said, when I worked the landfill, we used to do the hungry mill and they used to cover it perfectly.
Yeah, they wouldn't cut it under standards, I'm afraid, sorry. They wouldn't, they wouldn't meet common, the modern criteria, I'm afraid, sorry.
And if we go over to page, page ninety-six, where we've got the mixed organic weekly, what kind of stuff would you envisage going into there? It's option two.
Option two, oh, so the organic, so organic is food and garden waste.
Yep. That would include lawn clippings, do you remember?
Yes, yes, unfortunately, yep.
Well, probably, however, if you put lawn clippings in and try and compost, you ruin your compost because you will not get a test out of it because if anybody sprayed their lawn, it rejects the compost.
Yeah, it depends on the composting system you use. If you use a decent hot rock composting system, you can actually get around and actually destroy most of that.
Most of it, not all of it.
Yeah, you can get around most of it, yep.
Yeah, but yeah, that won't be good enough because you only have to get one test that fails and you have to throw the lot out.
Councillor Wylie.
Thank you. Chris, the paragraph twenty-eight, we're looking at the status quo. So I guess the part that I'm looking at there is, a lot of this is coming back from the contractors not wanting to pick up the plastic bags any longer. Is that a fair assessment?
No, I wouldn't say a lot of it's coming back from the contractors. The contractors have said that their preference is not to. But most of the push for getting rid of plastic bags predominantly is coming from public feedback. But also, in addition to that, we have health and safety concerns from contractors.
Okay. But as I read through this, I got the feeling that the contractors would prefer to be able to drive up, put the arm out, pick up the bin, tip it in and then drive to the next spot?
Yeah, so that's, we are most health and safety concerned. So for argument's sake, the waste management have definitely said that they do not enter contracts where there's the bag handling. There's a couple of, the primary concerns are, A, around the manual handling with lifting them, but also the amount of bags that split, especially if they're overweight and end up with curbside clean-up and that kind of thing. The simple fact is that it's also they have to have a runner in addition to a driver. So there's, it costs them extra to perform the service and they have extra health and safety concerns.
So has this been driven by waste management?
No, I'm just saying that they're a company that no has decided not to bid on contracts that include wide-scale pickup of plastic bags.
And they currently have our contract?
No, no, our contract is with EnviroWest.
Yep.
Who have said that they have concerns, but they haven't said a flat-out no.
Okay. So as we look at this and you've got the pricing options or the cost options on page ninety-two, I then think of, you know, the elderly couple in Green Island that, you know, essentially struggle to fill a bag every two weeks. And then I'm thinking of the cost of what we would be putting across everybody with the bin system. Has that been sort of, actually maybe doing a sense of looking at neighbourhood by neighbourhood aspect of the costs related to this?
We haven't worked out yet what funding model we're going to use. And so this is just looking at what preference people have for how their waste is collected. Then there are a range of funding options that we will look at. One of them with the idea that you incentivize the behaviours that you're trying to encourage and that you charge for the behaviours that you're trying to discourage. And so for households that have very little waste, you would incentivize that in terms of the charging mechanism that you put in place. So your little old lady, for example, in Auckland, they tag their bags. You can buy tags for your bin. And if you only fill your bin every six weeks, then you only put it out every six weeks and it gets collected in the tag. You put the tag on there, it gets swiped. That's what happens. So it doesn't have to be every week.
Okay. Hate to think that some of the bins smell like that, okay? And one of the things, as I looked at the slightly bigger picture of this, is, are we working in around with our other nearby communities? I'm thinking Omuru, through to Baclutha and co, about how they're going through the process. So because I'm sort of seeing that scale is a big part of recycling and the future of waste. And for us to be trying to do all the investment alone and then Omuru is doing something on their own and Baclutha's doing something on their own, you know, is there a more wider approach?
So there is definitely, we, members of, well, basically the Itagao-Southland Waste Area Network. So we do work quite closely with, in Southland and Itagao, with the other councils around infrastructure. We've been working a bit with Queenstown especially lately because they've just actually brought in their curbside service, et cetera. Waitaki are actually hands-off on their waste. Clutha already use, their recycling comes up and gets sorted here at our facility already. So we do have some examples where we already do work together. And yeah, part of the plan going forward is obviously to try and consolidate. We have the tyranny of distance in a lot of areas. But yeah, certainly we coordinate fairly regularly and try and identify any opportunities for working together.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alder.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question, sort of related to listening to Gary's one, just about skip days or diversion days. And in lower socio-economic areas, a lot of people, one, don't have a car and two, the cost to the trip to the rubbish dump is huge. And whether in fact there's that opportunity to do things in those areas?
Sorry, I'm not sure that was it, around providing additional services in lower socio-economic areas? To be able to, that would be a decision for council. We're not looking at providing different levels of service for certain areas. The, what we're trying to do at the moment is actually, we already have the skip days in certain areas as a different level of service provided to different communities in Dunedin. Part of what we're proposing as part of the larger waste futures is that it actually becomes more consistent right across the Dunedin region. If there was a desire to then introduce different levels of service again, that would more be a decision- the Dunedin region. Um, if there was a desire to then introduce different levels of service again, that would more be a decision, a government's decision of council as opposed to something we're looking at as part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
Council Hawkins, do you have another?
I was just indicating a willingness to move an amended version of the.
Council Gary's already beaten me. I've caught my eye on that one.
Thank you.
Um, Council, do you have another question? Or are you just moving to?
Is there a chance against inserting the specifications for the landfill? You were saying you had to put a metre of fill on top of a metre of cover and
Uh, it's part of the Waste Management Operations Plan. Um, I could ask Waste Management if they're prepared to, uh, to share it with you, but that's what's been approved by the, uh, the Waste Management, uh, responsible for the operations plan, which is part of their consent management, which is approved by the O R C.
Great. I've just got a couple of questions. Um, would you agree that the Waste Minimization Management Plan and Waste Futures are kind of circularly related to each other? Because the plan speaks to the Waste Futures, which is the mechanism of executing the plan to some extent.
Uh, it's definitely all interrelated. The, um, one of the problems we have is that the current W M P expires in September two thousand nineteen. So September two thousand nineteen, our, uh, W M P is actually expired. Um, so we're sort of, that's part one, another one of the reasons why they're slightly separated from the Waste Futures going into the, uh, into the tenure plan. Um, it's, it's all definitely interrelated. Um, however, we sort of have some different timeframes now, as I say, with the expiry of the W M P and with, uh, Waste Futures as part of the tenure plan.
Uh, just, you noted that it said it was expiring this year coming up, but I, I thought the Ministry of Environment had given us an opportunity not to need to renew it. So that we're actually not under any statutory obligation to renew it over that timeframe.
Uh, no, I remember that discussion. I was going to ask them about it, which I did, and I got a flat blank reply. So in order for us to be able to, uh, we have to have an operative W M P in order to be able to spend our waste levy funding.
Okay.
We're only allowed to spend waste levy funding on waste minimi- waste minimization activities and in accordance with our W M P. So we have to have some form of W M P operative in order to, uh, legitimize our waste levy spend, which includes waste minimization grants, et cetera.
So I guess to kind of follow Counselor Hawkins' question, um, with this consultation around the curbside, what is the timing issue of not treating it as a full, full public consultation and going into the annual plan? In such as that it could then be used to influence your understanding of going into the tenure plan as you go forward. I mean, are we looking at sort of half doing something now because we're planning on doing it later in a year's time? Another bit of a postponement?
Um, I guess you know, we're quite, uh, the main thing, we're quite keen to get a, a, a really good idea of the community's desire for significant change in service levels around this. So we, we wanted to get that back so we can identify, um, the preferred option for doing the detailed financial economic case, et cetera, around that. Um, just keen to try and get that as soon as possible and not have it confused with a wider program as part of the, uh, annual plan and as a confusing annual plan and tenure plan processes.
So I guess, I guess my last question is, on point fifty three, you said there's no public hearings planned. Why is that?
That's for this early engagement.
Yeah.
So because there'll be full consultation and engagement as part of the annual plan, which will have a fully costed option for, on the tenure plan, sorry, when, when, when the formal consultation happens, there will be hearings.
Okay.
This is just to help inform us and then doing, as Chris said, the detailed financial and economic work.
To some extent going forward though, like a one, uh, there's been a lot of design going into these questions today. Um, but one of them that I think will be the public will be quite interested in is how we're dealing with green waste or organic waste. Um, and do you worry that you may get too shallow, uh, response from the public to get a full understanding of where the public's going? And then, and then you might be find yourself already going into a business case, which by virtue of the fact that you're starting to generate that business case, will make it hard then to change later when you go to the full consultation.
Um, I think it should hopefully work the other way if we're actually engaging and giving people to give us an opportunity for, uh, feedback in this engagement process, putting the options out and, and asking the question about what, what they would like to see, should actually help us provide a more robust business case because we've already had the opportunity for early engagement. So when we go to full consultation, it's basically, this is what you've already told us. Um, so hopefully it'll actually be a more robust, uh, as I say, robust business case.
Okay. But that will be written only, the submissions will be in a written only form?
For, for the engagement, it'll be, yeah, basically it's, it, there'll be written submission, written response or, uh, on webpage and that kind of stuff. It won't have to be just, uh, written posted feedback. Um, there will be the opportunity to provide, by, via various means. But the actual formal consultation with hearings, et cetera, will be part of the tenure plan process.
The early engagement will take any sort of feedback. So the drop in sessions will keep notes as we have before.
Oh, so there will be maybe options where people can come in verbally, interact with you, but that won't, that won't be in the formal public hearings?
The, it's, it's not a formal S C P. That's, that's the difference.
Okay, but there will be mechanisms that they can engage in any form. Great, thank you. Um, Council Gary's indicated she wishes to move. Any more questions? Council Gary wants to move. Um, second.
I'm moving the recommendation.
Recommendation. Second for that? Council Wiley, just to speak.
Yes, I do. Um, following council declaring a climate change, a climate emergency and our new goal to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty, uh, and our commitment to show actions, uh, in this space, uh, I welcome, uh, these recommendations. Um, and I particularly welcome them because I note that a circular economy approach would result in a reduction in waste of twenty seven percent to landfill and twenty four percent reduction in associated carbon emissions from waste. The thing that I hear in the community repeatedly is why on earth have we still got the black plastic bags? And, uh, I just want to thank staff for their work on this report and the work going forward because I know this matter is so much more complex than most of the people in the community understand. Um, however, there is a certain frustration around timing. I believe the community is ready for a change and will welcome that early engagement. And the other aspect, uh, of that feedback that I certainly have on a regular basis is around the need for organic collection. Some communities are further ahead than others, uh, and I note the comment about a consistent approach across the community. I think that the important thing is going to be the way that we, um, take those submissions and I'm heartened to hear that it's going to be in a number of different ways, or that early engagement, um, how we communicate those possible changes. Um, and the timing, which will be a frustration to our community. But I think if people understand why that timing is as proposed, uh, there will be perhaps more comfort with it, but the earlier the better.
Council Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. And, and Council Gary's right, certainly the most consistent feedback, um, we get around the level of service that we offer, particularly around curbside collection is why still plastic bags and why not organic waste? And as far as I can tell, the two proposals here, the status quo and the, the alternative are the only two sensible options to go out for consultation on. Uh, I think a lot of the, I mean, the devil be in the detail around financing and resourcing. I think that's where it's going to get interesting. Not just in terms of what the infrastructure costs might be of whatever the organic waste collection system ends up being. Uh, but also how we manage the tension between, um, trying to use price signals as a mechanism to drive waste minimization uh, and the social equity of what are generally speaking regressive mechanisms for funding, whether that's through a targeted rate system or through user charges. Um, but we're not at that, we're not at that point yet, but I think that's going to be, um, quite an interesting discussion. I think there will be quite real frustration that this has taken as long as it has. Excuse me. Um, particularly as Counselor Gary has highlighted, the urgency around, um, some of the decisions that we make in the next few years in terms of our longer term infrastructure provision. But if it has to be, if it has to take that long from an implementation point of view, if there's nothing, if it's not going to be rolled out before the end of the calendar year twenty twenty one, uh, I don't see why, uh, we need to rush it, rush through this process, uh, in November. And I think as with any of these conversations, we have to think about who isn't included in a conversation. Uh, and I think, uh, in recent years in particular, we've seen, um, a sustained, uh, increase in interest from our student population around environmental issues, particularly around waste management. Um, November will be after university exams, um, and even if, even slightly before then, it's never going to be top of mind for our best and brightest engaging on council consultation processes. So I don't see what is lost by deferring this to be part of the, the conversation we're having during next year's annual plan. Um, what I know we would gain from that uh, is, uh, is, um, an opportunity to engage with what has been a very engaged segment of our community around, uh, waste related issues. Um, and so I'm, I'm going to move it in, uh, an amendment, um, that we defer the, uh, community engagement process to be as part of the, the annual plan. Um, but quickly before I do that, like, because it's not, it's not specific in here. Um, but it says, notice the preliminary community engagement process to seek feedback and that's, and the papers sets out the, the November timeline. Uh, but just to, um, to pick up on Counselor Eldon's point, uh, finally, and again, it's around, uh, social equity, this talks about, um, whatever the option is that is advanced, there will still be a discussion around what neighbourhood scale diversion systems might look like. And I think that's certainly something that we should, a path that we should go down as a, as a community. We need to recognize that for those to be effective in every neighbourhood and community, um, they will need to be resourced differently in order for them to be, um, effective in those areas. And, you know, Wanaka Waste Busters is an extraordinary example of our community, uh, waste diversion scheme can work, but it's largely reliant on the, um, social capital that is available to that community and the volunteer effort that is available to that community to make that work. And that is not a universal, uh, that, that's not a universal thing. Um, so I'm having to move this formally as an amendment, um, that the preliminary community engagement process, uh, is, uh, pushed out to be part of the annual plan process in twenty twenty.
You can't type that fast.
Oh, I can type that here. What, it's, someone's got to say.
And if it's helpful, I'm happy to second that or do whatever.
Just have to vote on the amendment. If the move is happy, don't, okay.
I'm happy to change it with that. I absolutely support that.
I think, I think we understand the amendment. All right, General speaking, very good. Um, any more speakers? Oh, because I just have one thing to say then. I think, um, it is exciting to see the city moving this direction. I do believe that, that there is an appetite for going down this path and doing it properly. My main concern and warning is that this is complex and that, um, there are going to be some issues that we, we, it's going to be very difficult to meet all of the endpoints that we're going to try to achieve. And therefore we must make sure that we don't go past something by accident in the pursuit of speed. I'm to some extent, I agree with Counsel Hawkins that making sure we do this at the right pace, but as long as we don't change the pace to then just use that as an excuse for not doing anything. Uh, we, I think we are at a point where we ran our system pretty much into the ground. And therefore we have the unique situation where we're more or less starting from scratch again. And that includes also bringing in the, um, community activities around zero waste and maximum diversion. Um, so I'm hoping that as we add each component to this, we are conscious of the fact of how it fits into what will be the final bigger picture. But I'm, I compliment staff on getting to this point and look forward to engagement. Council Gary, do you want to write a reply?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to pick up on is the inclusion of students for a long time. Uh, you will have heard me ask questions about this when we've talked about waste and I do think that there is a real, um, engagement from our student population, uh, around this area. They genuinely want to be part of this. So I, um, am very supportive of the amendment that was made to the motion for that reason.
So we have it moved by Council Gary and seconded by Council Hawkins with the amendment, oh, Council Wiley seconded, yeah, with the amendment to move the, um, consultation out into the annual plan. Okay, all those in favour? All those against? Carried. There's item eight, Waste Environmental Solutions Activity Report for the quarter ending thirtieth of June twenty nineteen. And I assume Mr Henderson will stay for that. Um, do you want to comment or discuss straight to questions?
Uh, no, take the report as written. Straight to questions.
Any questions? Council Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just quickly, um, there's a comment made here around urban recycling facilities uh, and a conversation being held at Countdown. Um, just making sure that there's an intention with the proposed upgrade to intercity bus travel waiting facilities for that neighbourhood?
Uh, I know that I've had a conversation with Transport, uh, with Richard anyway, and, um, we've actually got a licence to occupy, it's not in exactly in the same area, but that, uh, corner of the countdown on Murray Place that's, I don't know, maybe ten metres, five metres away from that bus stop. Um, there's a dead corner there with a little bit of shrubbery and a, a green fence in there. I don't know if that means anything to you? No. Um, anyway, that's where, that's where we're going to put it.
It's the pedestrian desire line you're talking about there, but that's fine.
Now, there's a, uh, so there's a little dead area in the corner of the countdown area where this hub's going, which is, yeah.
So sorry, there, there's room for both.
Yeah. Yeah. That was a short answer. There's room for both.
Any more questions? Um, I just have a quick question on the Waste Minimization Management Plan. Um, it says that the document's been further refined by the W M P Steering Committee. Um, it's been a while that I can remember that committee meeting. Cause I cheer it. Um, so when was this refining? When has it been done and, and what, what has the additional refining been?
Uh, so that last steering group meeting was, was the refining, that was the last version. So now the, that, uh, version which included the, um, C forty city targets and that's, at that meeting we discussed the inclusion of the C forty city targets.
Yeah.
Um, that was the last change. Now it is actually just basically going through a tidy up process with, um, policy and, uh, trying to get the waste assessment tidied up because it all needs to go through to the Public Officer of Health for their approval. Um, before we can actually do the final version.
Okay, thanks. Do I have to accept the report? Council Hawkins and then I think Council Eldon indicated to be seconded. All those in favour are accepting it?
Five.
Against? Next one. Um, I have nine, Transport Activity Report for the quarter ending thirtieth of June twenty nineteen. Mr Saunders. I, um, note this is probably the last time you'll be sitting in front of this committee, is it not? At least in this form?
Yes, in this role.
Yep. Um, well, I just want to, you know, before we go on to, um, to the report, just want to, um, extend my thanks for the job you've performed as the head of Transport. You've done a great job. You've, um, there's been a lot executed under you. And, um, I'm sure we'll miss you and I'm sure that you'll do great things at the O R C. Do you want to speak to the report or just go straight to my questions? Council Gary?
Uh, Mr Saunders, a couple of questions. First one is, um, I note it mentions the excellent progress made on section two of the potential connection. Are we ahead of schedule?
Uh, they are slightly ahead of schedule in the bulk fill and, uh, rock wall facing work, uh, due to the, up to this point, very good weather they've had. Uh, so that, that contingency in time may well, depending on that, but at this stage, they've made excellent progress with the bulk fill and the rock wall facing because we haven't had the weather delays we perhaps thought we might. So that's positive.
Thank you. Second question, um, I wondered if you, there was obviously some graphs around safety and, um, and I know this report would have been written before the close down of the site. So we had two accidents within ten days. Would you be able to talk to us about that? And I noticed the site's back up and running. Uh, I don't know when it was back up and running, but I noticed it was running today. Could you talk to us about, um, the process that happened after those accidents and, um, any, any procedural things and any, um,
Yep. Yeah, so we.
reassurance that we might have?
If we, if we get notified by our contractor, they, they will notify us immediately when there's a significant incident on site and, and obviously a, a vehicle rolling would be, would certainly be considered that. So they, they closed the site down themselves straight away. They, they take that very seriously in terms of their own process. Uh, and they will complete an, an initial investigation into how the incident happened and report that back to us uh, and notify us of any. and notify us of any correction or corrective actions they're going to make to their processes to prevent it happening again. They were two different types of incidents, one with a roller using a ramp and one with a truck dropping off rock over the, the area of the project where the path is at a lower point than the road, which is not something they had on section eight. So it was a slight change to their process and they've, they've obviously reviewed it subsequent to that. When we're happy with their corrective actions, then we'll notify them that we're, we're comfortable for the site to reopen.
So is, is full work happening now?
They are back to full work again. They're, they're still completing a final incident report, which they, they log with us. But based on their, their initial incident report and the corrective actions, we, if we have enough comfort, we'll let them work, start again.
And am I correct in saying that there were no injuries?
That's correct. Neither, neither incident resulted in injury, thankfully.
That's great to hear. So my third question is to ask, given we know you're moving on to another position, and you mentioned this in passing, so it's related to Peninsula Connection. And it's around the alternative funding for Fishery's Corner and the Desert Road. And what, what thinking you've got around that? So these are the two items that were dropped off the business case because they went strong enough. Obviously, it's of real interest to the community. Could you speak to that?
I don't, I don't have any firm, I, I haven't really got a, a position or an idea on that. It's, there will be a, a handover process with Simon and our project manager and others within the transport group. And it is something that needs some thinking. And we'll just need a review of the various funding streams available through transport safety, through tourism, resilience. There, there's a number of buckets, for want of a better word, of funding that we could potentially access given the, the type of site that the, the peninsula is. And that's what the team will have to work through.
So thank you for that. So you can reassure me that that will be part of the handover process and, and will be in train going on?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Alder?
Just a quick question. Blackhand Road footpath in Tannan Beach roundabout, is there room there for cycling as well on that footpath going up there?
No, that's not a shared path. It, it could be used by cyclists, but it's been constructed as a, as a walking path on that route. That's been the primary objective is to get pedestrians off the road. We're not taking enough width to do a full shared path. That would take quite a property take, which is not part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Richard, paragraph 26, Our Streets on page 112. I have a feeling there's a little bit of confusion around this in the sense of on the DCC website and we're talking about consultation. But yet there's no understanding of what we're consulting on in those streets. It seems to be there's discussion and very generic and it covers all the districts that are listed there, all nine of them, all areas they covered. Like for example, the one I'm most familiar with is Silverton going into Musbury Rise and down Musbury. And it talks about the different outcomes or possibilities, changing and adding in cycleways, paint to slow down traffic, things like that. For the residents living in those streets, what are they, are they just to say what they want and don't want? If they don't consult, what happens next? Those type of things.
Yeah, certainly. So the, the approach taken is similar to what we've done or what we did recently with the central city. I guess we've identified some streets where we think there needs to be improvements right across the transport space. So from, from vehicles right through to pedestrians. And this first stage of consultation is really just open ended for people to advise what they think needs to change or what, what doesn't, what we shouldn't be changing, what we could change, what sort of things we could consider as part of the project. That, that consultation's open until Thursday. And the, the types of things you identified around safe crossing points, lower speeds, could be painted cycleways, wider footpaths. All of those things, I guess, are the types of things we're expecting to hear back on. Once we've received all that feedback, and if you go online at the moment and have a look at the interactive maps, we're getting quite good engagement. I, I had a look at the North Road one last week and there are a significant number of comments on that. The team will have a look at that. And then from that, there'll be a priority exercise around what, you know, what order, we're not going to be doing all nine at once, obviously. Then there would be some further preliminary design work and targeted consultation. So door knocking and letter drops to the landowners, business owners, key stakeholders, schools, whatever it might be, within those specific roads or sites that are, that are talked about, which will give them the chance to engage specifically with that before it's committed to any future work. So initially, we're just looking at, looking for people's ideas to guide that development.
So this is the first step, and there are several steps to, well, at least two or three steps to come?
That's right.
Okay. And so anybody who doesn't get engaged right now by Thursday does have the ability to engage with something more concrete is defined at the next step?
Yeah, absolutely. So then when we start dealing with this, with an individual street or project within, of those nine, then, then people who are directly affected by that will, will get another chance to provide comment and give their feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I just have two, I think. Shaping Further Need and Transport, number 30. This looks like it's a state highway activity. Is this primarily what it is?
So it's, it is being led by NZTA, given its impact on the state highway. But it's, it has, Nick's currently the project lead on it, joint. So it does have DCC, a significant DCC input into that project, but it is being led out of NZTA.
And is this, is this referencing things like the hospital rebuild and other such things?
Yeah, so this is the piece of work that it used, it's been called a number of things. This, this will be the final name change, fingers crossed. That it looks at the, the wider network plan, in particular the state highways past the hospital, but looks at the freight routes, pedestrian connections, so that, that wider transport picture.
And the geographic footprint of its area of, that it's looking at, is it just the centre city or is it?
Pine Hill in the north to the Motorway off ramp in the south.
Okay.
And, and that Strathalan.
And what about inputs into those, like, again, I guess it's my favourite question. Obviously, you don't just arrive at the bottom of Pine Hill or at the oval, you've got to get to there. How much, how far, how much further out is it looking?
So in terms of a network design, it won't look too much further. But in terms of critical things like public transport, it will look more broadly from a, from a whole city perspective. But not, not in terms of streets, street design.
Okay, that makes sense. Will it, will it help with those other bigger, bigger order questions? Like, will it have data and stuff that will help us answer those other things?
Sorry, the other things?
Oh, like, in other words, if you have so many thousand car units hitting the bottom of the oval, will we be able to use that data then to help us inform our own decisions around how we might want to do with public transport?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, so there's a, there's a big component of that project is looking at travel demand and how we might cater for that.
Oh, excellent, okay. Very good. Councillor Hall?
Going back to mud tanks, and we've sorted out cleaning of mud tanks with the asbestos contamination.
We've got a new standard operating procedure that is with WorkSafe or just about to go to WorkSafe, where they've, they've designed a cover and a standard procedure, which we're happy mitigates that risk. So hopefully that will be a, that change will be made soon.
Okay, councillor Wiley, you going to have another question or?
Yeah, I do.
Yep.
Paragraph 29, do you have anything more to add about the LED street light installation?
Uh, no.
So it's, I, I guess. So basically has a broad spectrum and is, when does that work commence?
So Broad Spectrum have taken over the day to day maintenance activities as of last week. And the, later in the year, we're expecting the first of the, the lights to change from about the middle of August on. Just, I don't know the, the exact date the shipment's arriving. Where we have a failed high pressure sodium light, it'll be replaced with an LED. So we're not, even if it's not within an area that's already been upgraded. So we'd end up doing multiple, lots multiple times and purchasing assets that are, that are not necessary. So we, you will start seeing isolated LEDs pop up where we have a failure with a high pressure sodium. But the actual full renewal, including central management system, will be happening later in the year, November, December.
So is there a map of when the first?
No, there will, there will be. So that's what the team's working on with Broad Spectrum at the moment. And that'll be a map showing the rollout and then they'll be starting to notify areas as it gets closer to the time. So, so areas will be notified when they're due.
And the concerns of the, of a number of people that had the, about the change in colour of the city?
Look, we've, we've been through that excellent. I've got nothing further to add to previous meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alder?
Just on the LED lights, are there considerations for certain areas to have the, the lower?
Yep. So as, again, as we've covered off previously, we've committed to reviewing opportunities in the ecologically sensitive areas of the peninsula and the north coast. If there is a suitable alternative, which will be assessed by the project team, that is of a lower Kelvin than 3000, then we're, we're happy to look at that. But that, those areas have been pushed to the end of the rollout period to allow the technology to develop and then, and then they can consider it at that time.
Cool, thank you.
I just realised that I have another set of questions, which was the projects that are basically in the current National Land Transport Plan, which will take us out to the end of 2021. And then you've got projects that are deferred now to the next N L T P. So those ones won't be started until 2022 on, right?
Uh, that's, yeah, second half of 21. And unless minor improvement, safety funding or locust becomes available within this period. At this stage, the message from NZTA is we're oversubscribed and there's nothing. It may change as we go into year three if other councils fail to deliver some of their projects and, and some of that funding frees up. But at this stage, I, I wouldn't think it's likely that those projects in that second paragraph there would start before the, the second half of 2021.
One area that I get quite a few phone calls on from the disabled community is, it's not really, they're not big in this one, but you've got the Mira's Mobility Crossings there and you've got them in the current work stream as well. I've just recently got a phone call from Fiona Russell, who often calls up. She's, she's got quite a lot of experience, obviously, her life being in a wheelchair. A friend of hers was admitted to hospital last week with a broken pelvis after being hit by a turning car at, at Cargill's Corner. I'm wondering where on this work stream that particular intersection is sitting because it comes up quite often.
So that, that, that's picked up in the hillside road component of our streets.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. And so, yeah, I've told her to submit there already. So that's actually where people who are interested in that particular corner should be trying to make sure they get in on this.
Certainly. So we're, we're looking at that connection from Portsmouth Drive all the way down to the Forbury Hillside Roundabout. That's, that's the section that's included. So I'd certainly encourage submissions to that.
And King Edward Street as well?
Well, if, if it could include comments on King Edward Street, I'm just trying off the top of my head whether that one's included. But certainly the Cargill's intersection is. I'd have to go back and check on the length of King Edward Street.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, councillor Garrett's happy to move that we note the report and councillor Neil's second. Those in favour? Against?
I wanted to speak to it.
Oh, did you want to speak? I'm sorry.
I did. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mr Saunders for his work and that I have known Mr Saunders since he arrived in the Parks Department a very long time ago. And then we had a lot to do with one another when I was Chair of the Community Board and always appreciated his work with the community board. More recently, it's been around the Peninsula Connection, Richard. And I just wanted to express the comments from the community around your community engagement and how helpful that has been and how productive that has been. I've always appreciated your very clear and firm pushback at times and very clear answers. They might not always the ones you want to hear, but you can always rely on Richard to give you a very clear answer. But I did want to express the, the gratitude of the community for the work that you have done, both more publicly and behind the scenes to get, in particular, the Peninsula Connection rolling out and for the other projects you've been involved in across the city. So sincere thanks for that and good luck for your next position and we look forward to seeing you in that.
I want to thank you too, Richard. I guess we, I, overstepping on your ability to speak, I guess we have to go and redo the voting in two, do we? So those in favour? Against? Pass. Item 10, Property Services Activity Report for the Quarter Ending 30th of June 2019. Sandy?
David sends his apology here as at home. So I'll do my best.
Any questions? Councillor Benson Pope?
Thank you for the detail of work and initiatives and progress on page something rather, 105. I'm interested in where the envelope, I'm, I'm pleased to see that work being done and, and a high degree of scrutiny of the condition of the major civic buildings in particular. But I, I wonder if you could help me with the size of the envelope? For example, I'm referring to my, the green slime that I drew to your attention a fortnight ago and things like, you can explain. And things like the perpetually overflowing butt container outside one of our major venues, the Glenroy. Who, who, if anyone, if it's not property, takes the responsibility for noticing that sort of stuff? I mean, the, the slime I'm referring to, colleagues, was the green bloom along the whole front of the municipal chambers, which I, I'm told is being attended to. But I, I ask because I'm concerned that there doesn't appear to be a wider corporate culture of drawing someone's attention to stuff that just needs to be sorted. And those are two examples. I've now finished. For the time being.
The question was, is this property's responsibility?
Yes. If not, whose?
It's all of ours really.
Yes, that's my point.
Okay.
I guess if it's by the road, it could be transport. Because it's green though, it could be Parks and Rec.
I think it's, it's with all of these things, we, we have maintenance plans in place and, and regular checks. But as we say to everyone, if you see something that you don't think is being done, 407, 4000 or contact a member of staff and we will progress it.
Well, what I'm really asking is, while I'm happy to do that and will continue to be legally about this sort of thing, the front of the municipal chambers has a large number of our staff walking past it several times a day. Why, and, and the people who work in the Glenroy also presumably see the butt container that looks disgusting, as do people who are at events there, why do they not report it? Or do they and it's ignored?
I don't know the answer, but I certainly can follow up.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councillor Garrett?
Can I just follow up? Because one of the questions I have had in the past and still have is around the little parklet opposite. And I have the same concerns as councillor Benson Pope in the same question. I have on occasions, multiple times, logged the area there, the rubbish bins and so forth. And it does seem to be a slow process at times. And I've been made aware of the process, but I, I just, I, I have the same question around whose responsibility for that. And you may not be able to answer that, Miss Graham, but I just pop it in there as a question for what it's worth.
I can tell you was the city custodian was reviewing bins in and around that area last week or the week before and has noted that that area probably doesn't have adequate bins and will look at whether that can be addressed.
Further questions? Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I look forward to the point where the growing waiting list for social housing generates as much interest as the growing waiting list for leased car parks. But it's a question around where this work sits, I suppose, and in order to try and avoid duplication of effort. So the work that we, that council is doing around housing sits in community development. And, but it's being reported on through by, in the quarterly reporting for property. I'm just trying to seek assurance that this isn't being duplicated and that they're speaking to each other in an efficient way.
Absolutely, there are. There's a group internally who are working together. There's a group internally who are working together, but the management of the current community housing is a property function, which is why it's deployed through here.
And anything in the policy arena wouldn't be channelled through this? This is literally just how many units we have and how many people are living in them and what the rent is?
Yeah, there may be a degree of duplication of reporting, but not of the work.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions? I know councillor Hall's indicated he wishes to move that we note the Property Services report. Councillor Benson Pope seconded. Those in favour? Against? Don't want to speak to it, councillor? Passed. What's that, can I say? Oh, I said further questions. I didn't... I'm sorry, I missed. Very good. Is it... We could if you wanted to? Parks and Rec activity in quarterly report. Miss Graham? It might be. Very good. Okay, any questions on this report? Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. And I didn't know we'd raised this, so I'll raise it now. And it's been brought to some of our attention over the weekend, the recycling facilities or lack thereof at our new football turf and the capacity of waste collection. And I'm just trying to get a sense of when we are putting in new... When we're putting in new facilities or upgrading facilities, why we wouldn't install such infrastructure there?
That's a good question, I'll follow up, but I don't know the answer.
Thank you.
I know it's outside the timeframe of this report, but how's the Moskill Pool consultation going?
I'm not briefed to answer that at the moment, but I should be in a position in the next few days.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions? Can I have a mover? Councillor Benson Pope seconded, councillor Hall. All those in favour? Against? Carried. That brings us to the end. Any matters for the Chair? Oh, I know, it's not on the thing, sorry.
Last meeting, we all had a little ask.
Oh, okay. Matters for the Chair, at which point I call this meeting a close. Thank you.